We are live.
Thank you all. Call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for February 1st, 2021. We have chosen for this particular meeting to meet virtually. I'll call upon Mayor Protem.Miller. To kick us off.
Your Honor, if you would join me in a moment of silent reflection, please. And now if you would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Protem Miller? Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Very good. We have no minutes to approve tonight. And so we'll move right on down to public comment on issues that are not before us tonight. So. I understand we may have some people signed up for public comment.
Yes, our first one is Daniel Mondragon.
Good evening, Mr. Mondragon. Mr. Mondragon, are you there?
I am. Good evening.
Bet. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Daniel Mondragon. It is so good to be with you again. I'm here tonight to speak with you about the needed Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion DEI Task Force. I come as an Arvada resident, a member of ASJ, Arvadans for Social Justice, and as a person of faith. I acknowledge the land we stand on was traversed by the Ute and other Native peoples. I remember my ancestors and the land they walked in the San Luis Valley in Las Ananas County. Why should a DEI Task Force be created? What would it look like? And what would it do for Arvada? My wife and I recently began a study with a small group of fellow members at Christ the King Episcopal Church. Of Dr. Ibram Kendi's book, "Stamped from the Beginning: The Definitive History of Racist Ideas in America." Focusing on the Black community, Dr. Kendi wrote, "The principal function of racist ideas in American history has been the suppression of resistance to ending racial discrimination and its resulting racial disparities. Consumers of these racist ideas have been led to believe there is something wrong with Black people and not the policies that have enslaved, oppressed, and confined so many Black people." Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. captured one aspect of this reality in the use in his, in this following clip. Racist ideas have been the basis for codified systemic racism in our country, including slavery, Jim Crow laws, voter suppression, prevention of non-white individuals from running for or holding elected offices, creation of police slave patrols, redlining, and in attitudes across the country that emboldened signs to be hung, including blacks in the back of the bus or no Mexicans or dogs allowed. And most horrific of all, the lynchings, beheadings, and suffocation of people of color by fellow citizens and police sworn to serve and protect all members of the community. There may be policies or lack of policies in Arvada today that enable racism to continue. Reports of attitudes and behaviors in our neighborhoods provide evidence. All of us have been infected by the racist ideas of the past used to create exclusionary systems and structures. Today, here in Arvada, we have the opportunity to create new structures and policies designed to intentionally counter any and all lasting vestiges of white, European, and American superiority and systemic racism that prevents us from being one Arvada community. To do so, the establishment of a DEI Task Force is an important step. Thank you for taking steps towards that end. The Task Force ought to be representative of the community. Others and I in the community have recommendations for its diverse makeup. We also have ideas regarding the scope of work. We stand ready to discuss and assist in the development of the charter for the creation of the Task Force. Reach out to us and we will reach out to you. As we celebrate Black History Month, may we make efforts to better understand racism and learn about the Black community's contributions and sacrifices in building American society beyond sports and entertainment. May you and our Arvada community be well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have Keegan Connolly.
Keegan, are you with us?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Keegan Connolly. I live at 6655 Teller Street. I'm here tonight both as a member of the.
Yep, we've lost you. Are you there?
I am here. Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Technology, sorry. Sorry about that. So I'm here tonight as a member of Arvada Sustained Lead Advisor Committee and also as a resident. So first, I just wanted to ask you guys on what the committee has been working on. As you know, Arvada is in the middle of implementing the Organized Waste Program, which was an idea presented by our committee. We are fully invested in the program's success and have been working with city staff on its implementation, specifically in messaging the details of the program to the community. We are excited to see the program get implemented and more excited to help in the process. We also have our eye on the future and have been discussing future committee endeavors. We hope to have more information for you in the coming months. Finally, I want to leave you with some information. So I'm a professional engineer here in the state of Colorado and as an environmental engineer, I focus on air quality. And recently, I attended a meeting with the CDPHE, kind of on the air quality here in Colorado. And this kind of requires a little bit of background for you. So. Just so you guys know, Arvada is located entirely within the non-attainment area here in Colorado. And basically, that means our air quality is not very good. Colorado and Arvada in particular is not meeting the federal air quality standards for ground level ozone. And that really hurts the health of residents in Arvada. And just so we're all on the same page, this was before the last summer of smoke that we just had. And so when you layer in those occurrences of the, of smoke, we're really asking those in our community with pre-existing conditions such as asthma to live in conditions that are extremely bad for their health. The bad news is, is that this is expected to get worse over time. When you consider the beetle kill and the current drought conditions, we might be looking at a summer that's far worse than the one we just got through. The good news is, is that at the state level, Colorado was trying to do something. And then that brings me back to the meeting that I attended last week. The biggest contributor to ground level ozone on the front range is transportation emissions. And kudos to Arvada for having the G-line available to residents for reducing those emissions. But on top of that, the CDPHE is in the middle of creating regulations to reduce transportation emissions. And there are two ideas floated around that could potentially have an effect here in Arvada. And keep in mind that these regulations aren't going to be issued potentially until August. And the CDPHE is in the, in the process of taking public comment and receiving ideas from the public. But those two ideas that have already previously been expressed is, one of the ideas is having a pollution budget for transportation for state municipalities. And so this would basically have a direct impact on the fleet of vehicles in Arvada. The other idea floated is that large employers will be required to basically implement either a ride share. They'll be encouraged to telework or require access to public transit for their, their employees, you know. And so this would have a direct impact on large employers in Arvada. It's unclear what the definition of large employer is, but those are the two ideas floating around. And I hope this helps you in your commission. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other public speakers tonight?
No, that's all.
Very good. Very good. We'll move on to new business. We have no consent agenda tonight. And we have one resolution, Resolution 21030, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and the State of Colorado acting by and through the Front Range Waste Diversion Enterprise within the Department of Public Health and Environment for a grant package for the cash grant of $500,000 to support Arvada's purchase of recycling carts. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a grant from the State of Colorado through the Department of Public Health and Environment, acting through the Front Range Diversion Program. Grant of $500,000 for the purchase of crew-side recycling carts, which will serve to both protect the public health and the environment of the Front Range. I think it's worth noting that we were previously awarded a $512,000 grant from the Recycling Partnership, which included $430,000 for cart purchase and then another $32,000 for community engagement and public information around recycling. With this grant, we are at about $980,000 in grant funding for the purchase of recycling carts, which is significantly assisting our financial resources in the implementation of the waste hauling program. We therefore recommend that the City Council approve Resolution R21030, which authorizes the IGA and allows us to unlock the financial support through the grant program.
Yeah, open it up for City Council question or action?
I'd like to make a rec, or motion, Mayor, if there are no comments.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll let you go ahead and proceed with your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that R21-030, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and the State of Colorado acting by and through the Front Range Waste Diversion Enterprise within the Department of Public Health and Environment for a grant package for the cash grant of $500,000 to support Arvada's purchase of recycling carts be approved.
Motion's for approval. I'll do a roll call, Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Marriott?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor votes yes as well. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance on first reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that CB 21-006, an ordinance amending Article 5 International Residential Code, Section 18-181, Climatic and Geographical Design Criteria of Chapter 18 Buildings and Building Regulations of the Arvada City Code, be approved on first reading or published in full in public hearing to be set for March 1st, 2021 at 6:15 PM.
Motion's for approval on first reading. Ms. Miller, how do you vote on your motion?
I vote yes on that, sir.
Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marriott?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
Mayor votes yes as well. That passes unanimously. Very good. Public hearings. We have none, correct?
That's correct.
So we will move on to our workshop. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have a workshop to present to you tonight regarding a waste hauling update. Deputy C. Manager Lori Gillis will be presenting the information. We have several members of our team that will be supporting and assisting Deputy C. Manager Lori Gillis in this presentation. But she will be presenting most of the information. She reflects the hard work of many of the team members that are joined in our call tonight. So Lori, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Devon. I'll wait for the presentation. Okay. Tonight, thanks for the opportunity to hop on the calendar. I believe this committee, our core team, working on the residential waste and recycling collection will be presenting to you at least monthly over the next few months to ensure that you have the information that you need as we continue to communicate with the community and as we move through the process of implementation. Tonight, we're going to start with a refresh on the background. Won't spend a lot of time on it because you've all been working through this, but we want a little bit of reminder of how we got here. Talk about the status of the current project work. And we have some items we want to solicit your feedback on. And then we'll discuss future communications. Next slide, please. Stay on the one you're on. I'm sorry, on the court project team. So the core project team, you know, most of these folks, you've either seen them through utility billing or other projects that we've worked on in the city. I have to speak to the competency and the hard work of this group that's working together. There's a lot of collaboration and a lot of navigating as we go through implementation. Some of them are here tonight to help with any questions that may come up. I also want to acknowledge the City Attorney's Office and the Finance Department for the work that they've been doing to get us to where we're at with the project. Next slide, please. So looking back just briefly, probably the most important thing I can say on this slide is, we've been at this for a while. We've been having a lot of discussions. There's been a lot of research, learning, information, collaboration, communication. And there has been community engagement throughout this process. Council, we made sure that you had the information you needed for this engagement, for your discussions and your debate. And on June 15th, you provided the direction for organized waste hauling. And that's what we're talking about tonight. Next slide, please. As a reminder, and we talked about this a lot, back in June and previous months, what are the benefits and why are we here? And the benefits of organized waste hauling include improving our recycling rates, decreasing truck traffic, decreasing noise nuisance, nuisance and air pollution, to provide additional services such as recycling collection, bulk item drop-off events, and increase safety within our community with less truck traffic, lowering the cost to revenants, residents, and providing additional services, and to provide consistent waste hauling services in Arvada. Next slide, please. So over the past several months, we've had a lot of collaboration with our customers and our partners. And our customers at the top of the list are Arvada residents. We've had a number of incoming calls, correspondence, outgoing communication, education pieces. And we're diving into even more communications. Just want to share, over the past several weeks since December, we've had more than 100 calls per week. And today, after the Arvada report was sent out to residents, we had 50 calls today. The good news is, there's about 70% of those calls seeking information. They just want additional information and have some questions. We've received about 20%, and this is not scientific. This is just looking at the numbers today. But 20% of the calls are pretty excited about the program and have questions about recycling. Where do I go? Where do I find information? And we've received about 10% of pretty angry calls related to the program. And we're spending equal time with everybody and making sure they have the information that they need. Republic Service is, Republic Services is the residential waste and recycling provider. The Recycling Partnership provided a grant. We just heard tonight about the Front Range Waste Diversion Enterprise, $500,000 grant. And then Schaefer Systems is the organization providing the carts. And we approved, we approved, you approved that a few weeks ago. Many meetings, weekly meetings with these collaborators to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our customers. One thing I want to say is that Republic Services is sharing their experience. And then the team in turn is providing information about Arvada. Because we know that our customers are really important and we want to make sure that Republic Services is aware of the needs in our community. Next slide, please. This graphic is likely really familiar. And what it demonstrates is what our residents can expect to see over the next several months. We did land the Arvada report in residence starting this weekend. There will be another communication in February. In March, postcard will be sent out for residents to choose a cart size for residents that are participating in the program. Then in June, the carts will start to be delivered. In July, service begins. And September is when waste hauling charges will appear on utility bills. Next slide, please. Now, this list of milestones is really the project implementation team milestones. These milestones do affect our residents and it's important councils are aware some of the high-level behind-the-scenes work. There are many more line items in the project management of this project. But bottom line, the Republic website went live today. There will be a timeline that we're preparing for, for residents to do cart selection. And that's about March 8th to April 16th. On the 19th, through, through January 19th through April 30th, we're working on an upgrade to the software system. We will start receiving and staging new carts in June. And then there will be a couple of weeks where we are assembling and delivering those carts. And that's actually Schaefer. And then we'll also move those out and have those deployed by July 3rd with the pickup beginning on July 5th. What I wanted to say related to this is, it's not just about a list and checking things off the list. It's not about what we're doing, but we're paying very close attention to how we're doing it and keeping the voice of the customer in mind. Next slide, please. I believe all of you have seen this, and this was in the Arvada report. It's on our website. And we've been working hard to push out this information and communicate the service level selection that will be required of residents between March 8th and April 16th. You can see the service levels here, and I'm just at the highest level. The minimum service level is at $5.13 a month. That's with no cart where our residents are selecting their own hauler. Level one is a 35-gallon cart. Medium-sized cart is level two with a 65-gallon cart. And then level three is a 95-gallon cart. With levels one through three, we also will be providing the bulk item pickup and two leaf events a year. And all levels one, two, and three will have a recycling cart. I'm going to talk about that minimum service fee after we get through a few more slides. So I will have a good time for questions and if that works. Next slide, please. And I'm going to ask Rachel if she can step in on this slide.
Thank you, Lori. So throughout the project, we've been sharing information with the community. This shows our, our communication around the service level selection and the call to action for that. We started sharing this information in December. Our approach is to use every channel available to us in order to have as broad a reach as possible to our community. We repeat messages across channels in order to reduce opportunities for confusion so that you get a consistent message across channels. This graphic shows kind of what communication item is out and for what time period. So we had a water bill insert for this past billing cycle that was really effective at getting to our residents. The Arvada report, as Lori mentioned, we have a Republic newsletter that will go to all eligible households and that will start hitting mailboxes towards the middle of February. Then our cart selection postcard, which is the big call to action, starts to be mailed in March. We'll have more water bill inserts and it will have this featured in the Arvada report, social media, Channel 8, and again, our waste hauling hotline and email throughout. Can we go to the next slide, please? I wanted to show some examples of what the residents are seeing. On the black and white side is what was in the waste, the water bill insert this past cycle. We'll have another two-page insert for the next cycle, just repeating information that in case residents missed it the first time. And the other side is very small, but the Republic newsletter. Again, the service level selections, it is mirroring what is in the Arvada report. And we're not sharing new information. We're sharing the same consistent information every time we talk to residents. Lori, back to you.
Okay, thanks, Rachel. I really want to commend our Communications Department for getting that information out there and being responsive to where there's any needed clarification or additional information. It's served us well, and we know that we'll have to continue to be nimble in those communications. And you'll hear more about that in a few slides. So let's hop back to the minimum service fee. The city team continues to share facts with the community regarding the minimum service fee. While all residents are encouraged to participate in the program, Colorado law preserves the right to choose one's own waste hauler. As a community-wide program, there are benefits to all residents whether or not they participate in the city's program at a higher service level. The residents who choose not to participate in the waste hauling program and to contact and contract with a separate waste hauler will have to pay the minimum service fee, the $5.13. And those residents will benefit from bulky item and yard waste events, fewer trucks on the city's roads. Residents will also see environmental benefits through the requirement of recycling and reduced truck emissions. Emissions. All fees generated from the residents regarding organized waste hauling will be kept in a separate account to pay the, pay for the chosen hauler for residential pickup and bulky item events and to cover the cost incurred by the city through updates to the billing system and the utility billing staffing. These funds will not be used for governmental purposes. Council, would you like to ask questions now or would you like us to continue?
Do you have any questions? And if that's a side-by-side, it's kind of tough to see if there's any hands raised. I've not seen that any are, but I'll certainly open it up for some questions.
Mr. Mayor, I actually have a question I would ask at this point, if that's okay?
Please.
Okay, Ms. Gillis, the question I have with this slide you have up here on the, up right now is it talks about the minimum service fee of $5.13. But it doesn't break down where that $5.13 goes. Does that happen on any of the other material that's being sent out to residents? Whether it's in the water bill or online or at the time when they make their choices for, for what, what services they choose? Because this appears to say that for $5.13 a month, you get spring and fall yard waste events and two bulky item drop-offs, but that's not totally accurate. Is that correct?
The flow of the funds does, 88 cents goes to the city and $4.25 of the $5.13 does flow to Republic as part of the agreement for them to be our organized waste hauler. So there can be, we can add some more clarification and that information is in, I believe, in some of our frequently asked questions. And I would ask one of our teammates to chime in on that if it is on our frequently asked questions.
It is. We do have that. And that's on one of the next slides coming up as well.
My suggestion just would be that for people to make a choice, you know, when they're presented with material to say, here, pick your, pick, pick what you want. They have four choices. They have no service or they have three different levels of service to choose from the city. And having the detail of where the, what the money is for at each one of those levels of services, I think three of the four are currently accurate. One of them is, is a little bit opaque. And I think it would be good if that was totally transparent for residents so they knew when they're paying $5.13 a month where that money is going. So I would just suggest that that goes on all the material that we, that we put out to folks as they make their choice.
We can make sure there's some additional clarity. I'm not sure that it fits on every communication that we're providing, but we can certainly ensure that there's additional transparency.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's also an issue as it pertains to the minimum service fee as it's between people who live in HOAs and those who don't live in HOAs. And so are we making it clear that everyone living within an HOA is going to get charged the 80-some cents a month?
We are, and we've had those discussions prior to this rollout. Mr. O'Keefe, Jason has spent a lot of time talking to all HOAs. We can also increase the transparency there. If we can advance to the next slide, we do have a discussion point on all of that for clarity. But I appreciate your request for additional transparency.
Yeah.
Okay. And Jason, can I ask you to go at a high level on this slide for me?
Yes. So we kind of have it broken down into three separate pieces here. We have the Single Family, No Homeowners Association. That's the $5.13. And as you can see, the $5.13 kind of does the fee breakout. $4.25 goes to Republic. The 88 cents goes to the City of Arvada, which includes the large item drop-off events, leaf recycling, two employees, office. Two employees, office space, billing system upgrades and postage. That's kind of our first one, no, no homeowners, right, single family, no homeowners. Multi families well in there. Second one would be a HOA, a single family or multi family in an HOA without a current waste hauling contract. That is the same as this one up here, which is the. That a no homeowners association, so that's five thirteen, broken out the same way. Then our third one is the HOA with waste hauling contract. So we had about thirteen thousand residents in the city that fall into this category right here. That do not pay the four twenty-five and pay just the eighty-eight cents.
Any questions, we keep going?
I've got a little confusion there when I read that the where you've got the brand containing seven or fewer units. I'm not sure if some people are going to think that means just associations with seven or fewer units. I know it's intended to apply to multi-family residents.
Yes, so that's.
A little confusing.
Okay, yes, seven, seven or less in the entire city are eligible for the program. Seven or less, multi-family and single family.
Jason, that's a different seven than than's in that parenthesis, correct?
No, it's the same.
Am I the only one that's dense on this?
No, I I see your confusion.
So so Mayor, I think it's it's HOA, single family HOAs with homeowners or without a homeowners. But the multi-family residents are apartments, basically, that have seven or fewer units. It's two scenarios, you almost should break them out.
Yeah, I think so too.
I think that that causes some confusion.
We can, we can provide clarity on this. Okay. Jason, are you comfortable?
Oh, no problem.
Okay. Okay, next slide, please. So the default cart size is an area where we would like to have a bit of a conversation with you this evening. A few questions have been raised from council regarding that default cart size. So let me start with all program participants, service level one, two, and three. All of them will receive a ninety-five gallon recycling cart. The cart size called action is for residents to actively select a cart size within the program. Without selection, we need to designate a default cart size. At this time, we're planning for resident waste cart size when we don't hear back to default to ninety-five gallons. Let me just start with, and this is part of the discussion we've been having, is everybody has a choice. So with that call to action, any cart size can be selected. As part of the cart selection process, they can select any size. And the reason to default defaulting to the level three ninety-five gallon. Is because that is the standard cart size, it's a point of reference that people are familiar with. And is used mostly throughout the community, it's familiar to people. It's most common in the HOAs throughout the city. There are efficiencies in stocking various size, in stocking various sizes. And efficient efficiencies can make the program more effective. For example, should as we roll out the program, we wind up with excess ninety-five gallon carts. We can rotate them in to recycling carts, we can change the lid. So they can transfer between recycling and waste carts. So there's an efficiency and a comfort in the inventory there. Based on the contract with Republic Services. Residents can change out their cart size within the first hundred and eighty days, once within the first hundred and eighty days. Without a charge. So what that means is if they decide the default cart size doesn't work, they can change it out and they can go smaller. And those carts that they change out can be used for recycling. Additionally, in the future, they can change their carts out once annually at no charge. When we talk to Republican Schaefer, based on their experience, they are recommending the ninety-five gallon cart. And it doesn't have to do with their own revenues, it has to do with the commonality and the point of reference of those carts and most commonly used. We can make the decision to default to the sixty-four gallon, they they absolute sixty-five gallon. They absolutely would not recommend the thirty-five gallon cart. Republic shared some information in Colorado, the breakdown of their cart sizes for pay as you throw programs. The thirty-five gallon makes up twenty-five percent. The sixty-five gallon makes up about forty-five percent. And the ninety-five gallon makes up about thirty percent. So you can see there's a few more in the sixty-five gallon. But for initial rollout and because of the ability to transfer some of those carts from waste to recycling as the program shifts. The recommendation is we go to a default cart size of ninety-five gallon. And with that, I'll open it for questions, discussion?
I anticipate there might be some council members that want to discuss this issue.
Yes, Mayor, I have a question. Lori, on the selection of cart sizes, will residents be able to select a smaller? Recycling cart size if it's more appropriate for their garage? Or wherever they're going to store it?
They will not be able to do it on the cart selection. And in this process, in the call, the action, call to action for their waste cart selection. We recognize there may be some one offs where there's going to be that need. But the default or the only recycled cart size that we're starting with is the ninety-five gallon.
And will they be able to change that at some point in the future?
I would say it would be on a limited basis, we can support that, but that would not change the pricing structure. And ideally, for the overall efficiency of the program, we'd like to stick with the ninety-five gallon. But I will also say Jason has had conversations with both Republic and Schaefer about that. Jason, you want to say more?
Yes, they are available. And we do have that, those townhomes or different places with the one car garage that that we do recognize that, so.
That's terrific, thank you.
Or Pfeiffer, did you have a question or did it get answered? You're good.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I I have a comment or 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 advice.
Or three or four?
Or four or eight. Let me start with, I think the question here is, for those who don't respond to the city's inquiries about. Pick one of your four choices, what are we going to pick for them? And am I correct about that, Ms. Gillis?
That's correct.
Okay, so the the, you know, one of the 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 choices are, of course, they can get the the large cart. They can get the medium cart, the the small cart, or they could be deemed to have opted out if they didn't specifically choose a cart. That that opts them in. And so the question is, well, what what of those should the city do? And I would take council back and staff back to one of the goals of this program is to divert waste from the landfill. And I don't think by giving everybody the biggest carts, you're paying any attention to that goal at all. And I think the information you just provided us that in others, in other places, people tend to pick. The middle cart in a far greater, not not a far greater, but a greater number than any other size cart. And I think both of those things point to probably the 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 most logical decision to make. ought to be that folks get. You know, get the medium sized cart as their default cart. And that's just if they if they don't respond, now if they respond, obviously, they get what they want. I would even, I would even recommend that the the. I wouldn't give them a card at all until until they respond, you know, in other words, make sure that they positively affirm what cart they want. I realize I may be in the very big minority on that and that that's not likely the way it's going to go. But when your choices is, you know, the smallest bill or the biggest bill or something in between. Something in between probably seems reasonable, not just the biggest bill you can you can get. And of course, folks can get any size they want, all they have to do is respond, so that'd be my my input there.
Can I, can I respond real quick?
Sure.
So a a couple of things, first off, one thing we know that's going to happen is people will not respond. Because they're going to default to that size. When in talking to Schaefer today, they said sometimes a twenty percent response rate is considered good. So we're not going to hear from everybody and we know that. Also related to the cart sizes that Republic shared as far as twenty, thirty-five, sixty-five and ninety-five. That is after it has been phased in and learn as you go. We're in a very much a change management and folks learning, remember, the recycling rates in Arvada are less than eleven percent, I believe. So we're going to have to have a phase in period where people are learning to get out of that. Waste cart into the recycle cart. So that's another issue to consider with the default cart size. And one more point is Schaefer shared that ninety-five is more of a national average of waste cart size. So I I agree with your points as far as the end goal of the program. But it's a new program and we're going to have some education and and change management as we get to where we're we're headed.
An art, an argument can be made that you're going to help people's education by giving them a smaller. Regular trash can and that they're going to have to learn to utilize their ninety-six gallon recycle one. To be able to get all their trash in. You know, and I was slow to learn, but I have and I can tell you, there's a lot of weeks that I'll have a couple of bags of trash. In my ninety-six gallon regular trash can and my my recycle one at the end of two weeks is filled to the brim. So with with all cardboard cut down and and, you know, compacted as much as I can do it, so. I I see the logic of what Mister Marriott is suggesting for. You know, if our goal is truly the recycling, which I think it's a legitimate goal of this. And I think that frankly, Republic might be a little bit biased, it's they're going to get more. And I don't know what their profit level is at each level, but they're going to get more gross dollars if people are. Have defaulted into the ninety-six gallon size, Mister Pfeiffer?
I mean, I I understand the logic that. That John's proposing, I mean, it it makes logic if we're trying to, you know, push people more into recycling, which is the whole. You know, predecessor, the way we're approaching this whole problem. But I think from an asset management perspective, I would, I would change that a little bit. Because my fear would be is we have all these cards and they're not interchangeable with just a lid moving back and forth. And we spend more money on on smaller carts than just keeping the ninety-six out there. And then changing them out until you normalize the demand, if that makes sense. So from an asset management perspective, I think it's logical for the ninety-five gallon to be your first stab. Balance out where your recycle and your trash demands will be, so we don't carry as many assets of trash. You know, cans as as it would if we went out all middle, because if that was the case, then you would need for, you know, possibly forty thousand or less. Thirty-seven thousand sixty-five gallon ones that are not interchangeable with the with the recycling one. So I I just think I worry about more of the asset management perspective of it. Because I think that could be a hard thing to see a a lot of trash cans sitting there that are not reusable. Just my thoughts.
Thank you, um, just my thoughts, I completely understand where Councilmember Marriott and yourself are coming from there. But at the same time, just looking at human behavior, if we have people who just didn't respond. Not because they just didn't respond, but because they legitimately somehow didn't get the notice, they just tossed in the trash, they weren't paying attention. We drop off something smaller, they may not realize it can be upgraded. And they may be like, wait a second, we adjusted to the city system and I've got the smaller bin and I'm freaking out. And that'll basically create a little bit of anger probably upfront just from the shock of it. And so I actually really like starting with the ninety-five gallon, not because of the cost factor at all. But simply because it is the norm and it helps the transition, gets people used to using, you know, the recycling bins first. And change is really hard, I don't think we should make it any harder, the ninety-five gallon has been standard for most people across Arvada. Unless they bought their bins personally from a different vendor. So I I think just continuing with what people are familiar with, letting them get acclimated and then letting them choose. I want to do something else is a better way to go. I personally will be using the sixty-four gallon and getting a second recycling cart because I recycle so much, I have almost no trash. It's fantastic and that's one of my favorite features about this program is that we can add an extra trash bin or an extra recycling bin as we choose to. But in terms of the introduction for the layperson, keeping the standard to what they already know. Is the best approach in my opinion.
Okay, let me hear from the rest of you on this, I'll start with Mister Jones, do you have any? Input or thoughts?
I see logic on both sides of the equation. You know, again, supporting kind of the the initial thought process of. Keeping trash out of the landfill seems to make sense and on point with the message. But I agree that from an asset perspective, if the lids, if the lids truly were interchangeable, then I'd say. Pick the pick the sixty-four. But, you know, it just seems like a waste. To start with the sixty-four. If if they're not, if the lid covers aren't interchangeable with the sixty-four and ninety-five. So I I again, I will. I, you know, I think that. Probably the best bet is the started with the larger cart, but I think it goes against the philosophy and mission of the program.
Miss Ford?
Well, I tend to agree with what Mister Jones said. I, you know, and I I do think though, and I I do agree with what Lauren's saying as well. I think it takes a while for people to figure out what they're really going to need, you know, and. I think that there may be some people too that get involved in this that will not recycle. And so I think I'm I'm good with the ninety-five at this point. I I would trust what the industry is saying since they, you know, have done it. Before.
Beller?
Hey, Your Honor, I would tend to agree with what you said on this. I, you know, I was not a recycler back in New Hampshire when I moved in, you know, you guys have all heard me say I was forced into recycling. Because it was mandatory for the whole entire state, you know, live free or die, except you have to recycle. And I didn't know what to recycle or how to recycle and then back then you didn't have one container and you had to rinse out everything and take the labels off cans, it's maybe maybe mental. But um, I'll tell you what, I was glad I did it. And when I moved to Massachusetts, I said, I'm never recycling again. But you know, you just do, you do because it becomes ingrained in you. You know, now that I have a recycle bin and a and a trash bin, I. There are weeks we don't even have one trash bag, every, almost everything goes into recycle for us. We don't have lots of people here, it's Ranger and I, but um, you know, it's. I I think with the smaller bin, much like Councilmember Jones was saying, we, you know, it's it's why we did this, right? And I think that we can change them out, but I think if you are given a a smaller bin and a larger recycle bin. All right, here's my, here's my busy life, right? If I have to figure out how to recycle, so I don't have to go through the hassle of getting a new bin, that's what I'm going to do, right? And I'm going to recycle, I'm going to recycle more and and we are putting stickers on the top of the lid that says, here's what to recycle. So it's not just paper that you put in there, you know, here are all the things that you can put in this container. And the other thing is, a lot of people think plastic isn't recyclable, but when you, when you take a look at the the back and you see that little triangle, you realize that it is. So I would tend to agree with Mayor on this one and and go with the smaller bin.
Okay, it looks like we've got a four to three in terms of the recommendation to go with the. And I certainly understand where where the the group of four is coming from in terms of the asset management. That is a very compelling argument. But, you know, it looks like the majority, although this isn't a formal vote of council, the majority is saying stick with the ninety-five or ninety-six.
Mister Mister Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that that we take this feedback back to our partners at Republic Services. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that, that we take this feedback back to our partners at Republic Services and. You know, explain to them what the feedback they, they received and, and see what, see what their response is. I want to, I want to make sure that, that in making a decision like this, we don't put ourselves at a disadvantage somewhere down the road. Based on what the industry, the people that have been in the industry and have done this across the country. Have been telling us, so I, I, I certainly understand the council feedback, but we'd like to inform our, our partners in this whole process. What that feedback is and perhaps maybe have some additional discussion with you on this.
Yeah, the most concerning aspect of this conversation is what we heard from Lori Gillis. That maybe only 20% are, are going to. Actually make a selection at the get-go, is that what I heard?
We heard that from Schaefer today that, that they oftentimes. And I understand this because some of our team has talked about this, hey, what they're offering is what I want, I don't need to reply. So it's not necessarily ignoring it, it's a conscious choice, so default card is this, that's what I want, I don't need to do anything. And it's, it sounded to me like it was, they were able to navigate it, there was no way to get everybody to respond. And so. So. I, I actually feel very, in, in hearing your feedback as well, feel confident where everybody's going to land where they want to. It's just giving that 95 gallon, if we can start there. Then we'll be able to shift them to recycle and residents will be able to make that choice, they may make that choice based on price. They may make that choice once they learn how to recycle. But hearing from both Mayor Pro Tem Miller and Mayor Williams. If you're not doing it, it takes a while to get there. The one thing I want to say is we wanted to put this default card size on the. Note cards, the postcards for selection and that's on a very quick timeline. So there's not going to be a lot of timeline for back and forth conversation. That, that mailing is going out soon and it's actually going to print soon. If there, if there was overwhelming feedback to go one way or the other, we wanted to make sure we talk to council, but at this point in time. That 95 gallon, if we're able to put that on the postcards, we'll be able to keep this moving on time. So. Are we good with that? And we will still be having the conversations, because we will have to navigate that switch for folks that do step down on the size of the cart.
Well, I'm, I'm getting a little mixed message here, it's Lori, you're sounding like, let's go ahead and do the 95. And I'm hearing from Mr. Devon, let's go back to our partners and talk about this some more.
So let me clarify. I, I think we really do need to do the 95 and, and, and I, I respect the council's feelings on this, but. You know, this is, this, the information that we've received from the, you know, from the providers are showing us and, and you know, I think going back to. Mr. Pfeiffer's comments regarding asset management is the other compelling reason, we could end up in a situation where we will have. Not enough 95 gallon carts, especially to start out with. And again, I, I think part of the education process is people will, will probably default to throwing recycling away until they get educated. To the point where they start to put more of the recycling material in the 95 recycle, 95 gallon bin. And then they'll self-select for a, a smaller trash, trash bin. And I think if I'm not mistaken, we give people, I think. Some time to reconsider their choice. And Lori, I can't remember what that timeframe was, I think you mentioned it earlier, but they have, go ahead.
They have a hun, they have 180 days at which time they can make the change. And make that change for free, so they can swap them out and in that 180 days. We can shift those carts to recycle and switch the lids. The, the challenge, we have timing issues on these communications, because when the Arvada report went out, we were on the 95. Recognizing we had to get the postcards printed and that would be an opportunity to change if we needed to, but. No mixed messages, the, the, the team believes we need to go with 95 based upon the experience of the haulers and the ability to switch. I can tell you with great certainty, it isn't about the revenue piece for the, for the hauler. They didn't care in the discussion, the information from both Schaefer and, and Republic is getting through that. Education period and shifting and then having those larger carts to switch to recycle rather than having the 64 gallon, 65 gallon, which you cannot switch.
Okay, well then I would strongly advocate that in the six month implementation phase. That we be constantly putting out information on how to recycle, how to better recycle. And you know, as we get closer to the end of that 180 days or throughout that first 180 days. Reminding our residents that, you know, hey, you know, if you're doing a good job recycling, you might be able to downsize your. Your, your other container and, and start moving towards the goal of, of reducing what goes to the landfill. So you know, we don't just stop with, with the education process when we implement the program.
Absolutely not, and, and with the funds that were donated through the grants, that education and communication is really important. I do want to say one more thing about the 65 gallon. We could really frustrate our residents if they were putting out extra bags regularly and it's costing them more. So I believe we can go through this phase and I really appreciate your point about educating through that. 180 days, so they can see that option with the smaller cart and, and lower cost.
Ms. Pfeiffer?
God, I had my hand up there, so can I, can I recommend to the, the team here, maybe. Proceed however, you know, we've just discussed, but I think that there's an analysis and logistics. That you could do that shows what would the inventory be? Based on if you put 65 gallon or 95 gallons, knowing that a percentage of that is reusable. And maybe you can do a financial analysis and provide that to council, not to hold up what you're asking to do, but. I, you know, anecdotally, we're saying, I think there's a cost benefit that, that's associated to this. And you need to put the logistics into a cost benefit analysis and send it back to us. Sounds good?
Maybe, and of course we will provide you whatever information you need, we are running without a playbook on being able to predict what our residents are going to ask for and what they're going to need.
Now, hold on, hold on Lori, but I have to interrupt you there because you just told me your consultants in Republic have been informing you in a lot of this, this, this data points. Leveraging that, those resources and those data points should inform you in your cost benefit analysis.
On a projected cost benefit analysis, yes. So we can take that information and provide that, you are correct, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Yeah, so let's, let's just go with that and provide the cost benefit back to all of us and we should be good to rock and roll. Because it will clearly show that the 95 gallon is a, a better cost to the risk. Than doing the 65, but you need to use that analysis and I think council would benefit from that information.
Okay, can I confirm that we can move forward with the 95 and we will show you this information?
You, you have four of us that say yes, so I think that that's still the case, but. I think I'd like to not just have four of us, I'd like all of us to understand the financial impacts of those decisions. That would be kind of interesting for, for my, my peers.
Understand.
Well, it would be good information to share with the public as justification for why we made the default choice that we made.
Understand, we will do it.
Thank you.
So, are we, are we done with default carts?
You know, so let me add one little side thing to that, sorry, I had my hand up and you didn't see it, but. The, the question I would have and maybe somebody ought to check with the sustainability people. You know, they, this is kind of their deal and they got it, got it imposed here. But what is their plan, you know, do they have future plans to try to now sell people into the, the whole pay as you throw? Live the, live the pay as you throw lifestyle or whatever they might call it. Or are they kind of done with this now and, and on to other things, because. You know, I would, I would think, I would hope that, that this was pitched so hard as. Environmentally sustainable and good for the planet and reducing waste diversion and, and, and all, all these, all these things that seemed. To be important to them at some point, that now they have an opportunity to realize some of those things. But the only way they're going to realize those things is if, if they were to go forth. And then perform kind of a public relations campaign to the citizens of Arvada and say. Hey, now that we've gotten you a trash and recycling container, think about a smaller trash container and, you know, live a more pure life. And so, you know, my question would be, is that something they're planning on doing? If so, is that something they're planning on doing soon? You know, where we're going to, you know, distribute a bunch of big carts and then. In the net, in the first year afterwards, go and redistribute a bunch of medium sized and small carts because they didn't do their job or. Or are they done with it now that it's implemented? I, I think those are all questions and then, and the other piece of, of information that would be important in that would be the hauler. You know, what, what are, what's their experience in doing this, obviously this whole pay as you throw. Excuse me, idea is integral in this whole, this whole scheme that we're in here and the, the. You know, at, at what point do, do, do we try to take advantage of that? At what point does that become something other than just a, you know, than, than just, than, than just what it's been so far? So anyway, those are just side, side note kind of.
Okay, and I, I will just respond back with sustainability committee is with us and they recognize the need to. Help us with pushing information out there, so they will be joining in in some of the. Education communication information. I also will say that Rachel is going to talk about. Communicating that education material and engaging our community in conversations and information. So that's coming up here in a minute as well.
Okay.
Lori, um, Mayor, I have a question for Lori. Lori, are we going, are we planning to do more education eventually on? Recycling, I, I know that that's part of the contract for the waste haulers. That part of their responsibility is to educate. On recycling techniques. And then my other question is. In the information, you know, in terms of the choosing the cart size. You know, you raised the point about the plastic bags. And. I, I haven't seen anything yet tonight about the extra cost for those plastic bags and. How residents can, you know, manage their trash so that they don't have to have that extra cost in. Plastic bags, because I think that's going to be a, a tough thing. Based on what we've heard for people in terms of changing their thinking about how they throw out their trash.
Okay, we are collaborating with Republic and we will take every opportunity to communicate about. Additional information about recycling. And one of my, my teams here sending me messages and I just want to share, you know, one of the other points about as we move to work, towards more recycling, we'll need more of those 95. Gallon carts, which will help with the asset management that Mr. Pfeiffer raised. So from that end, it is a partnership and we're having those discussions, we're leaning on their experience, but they are also leaning on us. With regards to our residents and the needs and how they're seeing things and where they're at in their education and in their recycling. So there will be more. And Nancy, I don't have that bag cost in this presentation, we can send some more. To you or I can have somebody jump on and towards the end and answer those questions as well. If that's okay.
That, that's fine Lori, thanks.
Okay. Not see any hands up, so you may proceed.
Okay, well, we'll go on to something easy. So we had some questions around landlord and tenants and how we're managing that and what I want to say is that there are 5,800. Tenant landlord relationships in our current utility building, billing system. Navigating these relationships is not new. The element of waste collection services is new. But it's just like other utilities, the city has no way of knowing exactly what that relationship as far as who pays the landlord or the tenant. We will be notifying both parties to encourage communication between them. The cart selection postcard will go to the tenant, but a week ahead of that, we will notify the property owner. A week ahead with the same postcard and say you need to collaborate and decide. But again, this isn't new, we navigate this with our utility billings as well. The ultimate responsibility for payment is tied with the property. So we will want to make sure that that property owner is aware. Of that information. So questions on that?
Yep, Lori, I have a question on that, so. In the event you send out a postcard to a landlord a week ahead of time and then a week later, you send one to a resident. At a, at a property, but who is not the owner of the property. And the resident returns a postcard with their choice on there. Does the, does the landlord have to affirm that choice anywhere or accept that choice? Or, or if you get a postcard back from any, anybody in the chain, whether they be the property owner or the resident. That just becomes what it is and, and away you go, how, how's that going to work?
So the postcard that goes out and my team will jump in if, if there's more details, but the postcard goes out and it will have a. A code that will need to be entered and then the property address will come up and the cart selection can be made. Should the landlord call and say. This is the size of card that's wanted, they will be calling the utility billing, I believe they're going to call the 7575 number, Jason, you want to jump in here?
Yes, they will call 7575, which will first go to Republic. And then that will bounce back to utility billing 7070. And we will set that up, just like we do with the water. Landlord has the final say no matter what. But I, I guess that, I, I understand if, if there's conflicting choices made between the property owner and the, and the resident, that the property owner. Would have superiority there, but the, 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 here's, here's the why I ask. A property owner who doesn't live in Arvada may not get that. Postcard before the property resident does. And that, that yet, but yet the property owner is the one who in, in the case of a situation where property were to be leaned for non-payment of bills. That property owner is responsible for that, it would seem to me. That it's, it's incumbent on those type, those properties, that only the property owner can make the choice. And, you know, we're already, we, as we just discussed. In a, a, a non responding situation, we've got a default action, which would be, they get the biggest trash cans and, and. And that's what it, what it is, but that. That it ought to be affirmative that the property owner responds and only the property owner responds. And if the property owner doesn't respond, then it goes to the default selection, which is I think what the city wants anyway, but I, I wouldn't. I wouldn't let someone who's not the property owner. Be able to put the property owner in line for a lean. I just don't think that's a proper relationship at, at all. And that if the, if the property owner says, okay, I'll, you know, you can pick whatever you want, I'll, I'll, I'll get you whatever choice you want. I think that's fine, I believe that's what most property owners would do, but. And, and you don't have to look any further than your current water bills. You don't let tenants change water bills at all, ever, for any reason. So there should be no reason to let a tenant do that with a trash bill.
So Councilmember Marriott, part of the challenge with this has to do with what is in the lease agreement between the tenant. And the landlord. There are tenants and landlord agreements that have. Waste hauling, the responsibility of the tenant and waste hauling or the responsibility landlord, I certainly understand your point about. Landlord owning the responsibility for the lean. That is why we are making sure that they are informed. I would also point out that as far as water utilization is the responsibility of the tenant. And sometimes paid by the tenant, sometimes paid by the landlord, so. There's no easy way to say this is exactly how it works every time, we're going to make every effort to reach out to the landlord and the tenant. And there will probably be some things we'll have to adjust along the way to. Fix where places weren't working, where it didn't work out how it should.
Yeah, well, my suggestion, because it falls the same as water, just treat it exactly the way you do water. And when you rent a house in Arvada as a tenant, you can't call Arvada Water and say, put the water bill in my name. Arvada Water will say, sorry, we can't do that, you need to have your landlord call. And so I think. Because the, the financial. Situation and financial. Is, is the same for the trash hauling as water, it ought to be just treated the same, I mean, there's some reason why you do that with water. You got to do the same with trash, so anyway, might just again, my two cents.
Others on this issue? Crickets?
You go forward? So another question that has come up is regarding carryout services and, and really the, the slide. So another question that has come up is regarding carryout services and, and really the, the slide states it all, but Republic Services per the contract and, and you were, um, emphasized this when we were talking about the contract was that they provide front door pickup for residents with physical inability to bring out their containers. So they will need to call the seven five seven five number to get that arranged. But the containers must be accessible by the drivers. So that is a service that they're providing. We're going to talk a lot more about customer service levels next time that we're here with you. We've had a lot of discussions with Republic and we're looking at reports that they utilize to manage customer service, not just about the carryout service. So we'll have more to come on that. Been very impressed with the reports that they have related to customer service calls and responsiveness.
So Lori, I have a question on that. Um, we have a requirement in the city that our cans have to be in a certain place. Is that correct? Overall citizens have to have their cans out of sight?
Yes, I can't recite the exact words on that, but yes.
So would we be giving people with disabilities, uh, a special change there in order to have those, uh, carts available to the hauler?
Well, the, the carts have to be at the side or the back of the house. And Emily Grog is, is providing me some information here, um, except for when it's out for pickup and that goes for everybody. So main point on this, they will pick, go and pick up the carts and bring them out, but they just can't be in the garage or where they're not accessible behind fences. So they, they have to be out where the waste hauler can come and grab them, not go in a garage or around the back behind the house.
But on the side would be okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Grog. Go to that one.
Any other questions on that?
Okay, next slide. Now we're going to shift gears on you as far as what this is going to look like. And um, I just want to say, as we roll out these cards, more conversations that we have, this is a big deal and it must be managed appropriately. So on June first, there's going to be pre deployment and staging of the carts. And what that's going to look like, look like is we're going to have fifty-four foot tractor trailers driving in. Assembly and, um, delivery crews will offload those carts into a staging area to prepare for deployment. They don't just dump them. It's all organized. And then there will be for pre deployment and getting the carts to the staging area, there will be six to seven, six to eight truckloads a day until all the ordered carts are delivered. There'll be a three man crew that will be onsite offloading them and staging them. Then, starting around June seventh, the carts, um, start to be assembled and they'll be assembled when they're delivered to the homes. And they're delivered based upon the, the routes. So the assembly and delivery is going to follow the routes. There'll be six four man crews that are going to be required to complete this project. They'll deliver approximately five hundred carts a day. And a pro, with the six crews, about three thousand a day will be delivered, five hundred per crew. For a total of eighteen thousand carts delivered each week. May have that math up a little bit with the way I read it. But one three man crew will remain at the staging area to help get the carts headed to where they're going. Distribution of the carts will be off of twenty foot straight box trucks or three ton pickups with twenty-five foot trailers. Main thing is I don't have to go through all these details, but it's kind of a big event, getting them into the staging area and then getting getting them out to residents. And there's a lot of logistics to doing that. They are well prepared. They are well experienced. This is Shaffer doing this work. And they use an RFID tag that's scanned. So they say, here's the cart scanned at this address. So they, it's a very accountable system. And there'll be reports at the end of each day about how the carts will, were delivered.
Lori, what's the total number of carts that are being delivered between recycled and, and, uh, non-recycled?
I don't have that count. Jason, do you have an approximate or Nancy on that? We're just right now, um, because the carts aren't ordered yet. And we haven't gone through that cart selection process. No, exactly. I, I want to ask Jason or Nancy to jump in on here. I'm going to say the wrong number.
Correct. Well, until, uh, April sixteenth, we won't really know for sure how many carts we're going to order. But we put in there twenty-six thousand trash, twenty-six thousand recycle.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's a lot.
Fifty-two thousand total. Got it.
So as we're looking at this, the, actually, next slide, please. So when we think about the staging area, is everybody else frozen?
I don't know, but that slide's either blurry or I in front of a screen for too long today.
I think, I think the slide's blurry. I'm not sure what, what occurred.
We can, I'm either going to try again. Okay.
Visual A is much, or visual B is much better than visual A.
Okay. So here we are. Um, this is about assembly and, um, distribution of the carts and that staging site as you, as I described, will have a lot of activity. And so we actually vetted seventeen different sites when we were looking at where and where to stage these carts. We have narrowed it down to, just want to give you some of the things we're looking at. We are looking at the turning radius for the tractor trailers, the in and out egress. Out of public sight, minimal disruption, access from a main roadway. So we, we vetted about seventeen sites and sites and we're down to these three sites. We can use, we can go with one, we're working with Shaffer now. We can go with one or we might split it up, but the main thing is the location of these, um, three sites do work. They have adequate site space. We need either two twenty thousand square feet or one fifty thousand square foot location. And so I was curious if council had feedback on these sites.
Again, I can't see if hands are up. I'll, I'll start out. I, I, I have some concern about the Arvada Center from the perspective that if, uh, you know, the stars align right at what, you know, conceivably, we might be starting to have some at least outdoor theater type things going on, uh, by then. And obviously don't want to be precluding theater things going, you know, or other large group gathering, the Arvada Center, because we don't have the space available.
Mayor, if I, if I may, um, I, I did talk to Philip Snead about, um, the possibility of using the Arvada Center. And based on the timeline and when the programming is expected to ramp up, which is in early July with the use of the outdoor theater, uh, he felt that, that timing would work. So just wanted to let you know, we already kind of looked at that aspect.
And, you know, and I, I know we're in a workshop that's, that's, and this isn't a, a executive session or something, but I do have some concern about, um, you know, vandalism or stealing of, of why anybody would want to steal a, a trash container. But, uh, you know, how are we going to protect these, these assets prior to deployment?
I think that's going to depend on where we do it. Some of the, the conversation before is putting a putting a fence around the site during deployment, but we didn't have those concerns of either the school site or the Arvada Center. So, um, we, we will pay attention to that. But I don't believe we were going to fence either of these sites. Nancy, I think you were the one working on this.
Sorry, I can't start my video, but, um, yes, we were, um, actually, Jason and I talked about fencing any site that we chose with temporary fencing.
Okay. Thanks for that.
Any other input on this issue?
You asked my question, which was security and it sounds like they may be may or may not be trying to figure that out.
I hope they would be trying to figure it out, so.
My, my only advice would be that unless it was really the only option, I wouldn't do it at the Arvada Center. I mean, this is going to be a pretty industrial process to be unloading semis and assembling trash cans and then but breaking them out for delivery. And I would try to do it out of the view of the public and there's really nowhere at the Arvada Center to do that. You know, you'd be taking one of the parking lots or one of the fields or something like that there and unless there was some reason why that was absolutely the best spot, I would stay away from that. And, you know, Arvada High School's just down the street and kind of geographically in the middle of Arvada, although I guess Arvada West is too, but, um, I, I would lean towards one of those two.
We have talked to the school district and they're on board. We're doing preliminary facility use forms, actually for all areas to make sure at least we're penciled in in case anything falls through.
Will we be paying some rent, will we be paying some rent to whichever property we would potentially be using or not?
Both are partners, so there wasn't the anticipation of that.
Ah, great.
Depends on whether or not they help us with Myers Pool, I suppose.
Have a lot going on with the school district. Okay. Okay. So, good there?
No other questions there?
Okay, so the next, we're, we're getting close, but not that close. Okay, thi- this one, and I'm not going to talk about this a lot. The other side of this is we will have residents that have resident owned carts that will want to get rid of the carts. And I just want to highlight for council, this is, i- is kind of a sticky problem because again, not knowing which carts go back to the other providers that are either owned or not owned by the residents. So we're still working with Republic and Shaffer to talk about what our options are related to resident owned carts. Some are recyclable, some are not. So navigating that has become a little bit more challenging, but we thought it was important to get through the new carts first, and this is what we're going to be working on this next week. Okay, next slide. So again, I'm just highlighting that we are, um, collaborating with Republic, the work that Jason has done as far as getting them addresses, doing the maps, having the conversations, navigating things that we were not aware of. We were not aware of all the HOAs and coming up with those addresses and a lot of great work's been done that will provide information going forward. As described right now, there's going to be eleven routes, um, per day Monday through Friday. So you can read all this. I won't read it to you, but the one thing that I do want to say that was comforting is Republic will be using, um, senior drivers, more experienced drivers as they start out on many of the routes, so they can help navigate and, um, prepare and serve the citizens well. They're not throwing a bunch of new drivers to the city of Arvada. They have a good plan behind how they're setting up their personnel. Questions on that? I'm going to hand off to Rachel to talk a little bit about the rollout and the outreach. You've seen a lot of it. You're going to see a lot more.
Thank you, Lori. So the next phase of outreach after we can, we complete the cart or service level selection outreach would be cart and service rollout. So we'll have another newsletter from Republic. And then we start in with some recycling education and materials from our grant with the recycling partnership. We have a carts are coming postcard. We'll have content in the June, July Arvada report. A cart packet, um, which is a, a major component of the recycling partnerships, recycling education. It has an info card and an FAQ to help people learn how to use their new recycling cart. There'll be other materials in the cart packet as well. We'll continue with our water bill inserts. We would like to do some community events with Republic. They've had good luck with meet the driver type events where they take the trash trucks out to a park um, and invite, uh, residents for that service day to come and, and meet the drivers. But obviously, uh, we'll be following public health, uh, whatever the guidelines are at the time. So that, that's kind of penciled in. Um, and we'll continue with our social media, Channel Eight, and sharing the messages with all, on all of the city's communication channels. One thing to note, um, as we get closer to cart and service rollout, the communication will narrow a bit. So we'll be talking to the, the residents, um, more intensely who have chosen to participate in cart service about how to use their cart service. We'll have other communications that are more broad about the active, about the services that are available to everyone. So there's, you know, kind of a little distinction there. Can we go to the next slide? I want to highlight the education materials that we have. Uh, you can access these right now. As Lori mentioned, our, um, our Republic website launched today. Uh, so we have a micro site from Republic that's just for Arvada residents. You can go see the rates. We don't have events yet. Um, you can find resources. So if you have a question about can I throw motor oil in my trash can, there's resources to connect you to Rooney Road or Sustainability. You can't throw that in your trash can. There are kid activities, um, so like coloring sheets and things like that. And then, um, what you see on the right side of the screen is our service guide. And the service guide goes into detail about what can, what you can put in your trash can, what you can put in your recycle bin, what you can have for curbside pickup, um, and then some service details about what time of day to put your cart out. This will also be a site where people can get their service calendars to, so if they lose it, what day their trash or recycling is being picked up will be on this site. Um, so I encourage you to, to look at it and see what resources are available to our residents. Lori, I'm not sure what the
Next slide?
Next slide.
Yeah. Okay. So that's me. Um, won't spend a lot of time here, but your team is monitoring this. We're meeting more than weekly at this point. Uh, we have conversations, email groups. Um, we're being very responsive. I use we loosely because I'm not going to take any credit between Jason and Debbie and then Michelle Brozky. The, the phone calls are coming in, the emails are coming in. What is helping us do is keep a pulse and make sure we can adjust our communications if we need to. But what, we're also understanding where our residents are at and how we can better serve them. So it's been really good. And like I said, after the Arvada report went out, the numbers are way up and I think it's going to be that way for a while. So just sharing, and you want the next slide, please, is just really, we have a dashboard where we're monitoring everything that's going on. This is page one of, I think, like four, but we're, we're tracking absolutely everything. And the great project management of Madeline, um, Stephen, she's keeping us on track and asking questions and following up and making sure we're staying ahead of what we need to. And with that, I wanted to share some specifics that we're hearing and Rachel's going to talk about that on the next slide.
Thank you. Um, so I've put categorized what we're hearing from residents into four very broad buckets. We have people who are just finding out about the program, so building awareness. We have change management, uh, which is where the, I would say the bulk of our contacts are. How is this going to work for me? How do I select my service? How do I, you know, figure out how to use this new service, um, from the city? And with, and then on the next slide, I'll talk about two other, um, buckets. But with each type of contact, we are sharing background information, answering specific questions, treating everyone to the utmost of customer service. Um, so responding with empathy, answering specific questions and providing resources. And then I have aligned, um, outreach activities that kind of go with building program awareness, um, what we're doing to, to help people with change management. So can we move to the next slide? And we'll talk about the other. We also have, um, people who are expressing opposition to the program. Um, so we're sharing facts and backgrounds with them. And they are getting outreach materials too. And then people who are sharing support for the program. They're getting the same outreach and support as well. So that, those are kind of the broad areas that we're hearing. Um, we're developing refreshed FAQs that are focused on what people are asking now. Uh, and then we can move as we move through the change management cycle, we'll have those FAQs ready to go for each phase of change management.
Next slide, next slide, please. So we've already talked about all this. We're going to take your feedback, get the information that you have requested. We are going to communicate and get that call to action out to the residents and we, I know we can't communicate that enough based on our conversations. We're adjusting our expectations about what the responsive rate, response rate will be on that, recognizing some folks will just want to go to the default cart. We are hiring default cart. We are hiring utility billing FTE to manage that piece of it that was included in the numbers provided clear back in June. Continue to communicate, inform and respond and provide regular council updates. As I stated at the beginning, we'll probably be back in a workshop on a monthly basis, but you can expect something every week in your weekly and we'll try and keep it concise. There's a lot going on and if you ever feel like you're not armed with the information that you need, please let us know so we can get you that information because we recognize that you two are getting those emails and phone calls. And with that, any questions?
It's Piper.
So I guess, you know, I was waiting to, well, I have a couple of them. Actually, first and foremost, communications with HOAs and metro districts. Where are we at with that? I thought we'd go through all this and I'd like to know where we are with it because I still believe there may be some areas of opportunities around communication with those organizations.
I know Jason's ready to take that.
Oh, I've talked to four metro districts that are involved with the HOAs in Arvada. And everything is, is done good. I got their contracts. I would say that's a done deal, but I, I don't know. What, what questions more do you have about that?
Well, well, like my metro district, which my wife serves on, had no clue, no one outreached them at all the last, you know, back in December. So you know, you have fifteen hundred residents here with their own trash service already with Republic. So I'm a, you know, I, I want to make sure you're reaching out and saying, hey, metro district, if you don't respond, we're pulling you into our, our program. We got to be crystal clear about that. I want it in writing back from these metro districts and HOAs that they've confirmed that they got your message and they heard it.
So we did send out a Google form and email that I sent it to everybody that I had. The list with that we were working on was pretty old and outdated. So I was able to get like seventy-eight responses and with that, we got all the current contact information and waste hauling contracts that they have today.
Okay.
So I feel really good. We have about twenty HOAs left that I still haven't been able to get in touch with. And I'm hoping that the postcard selection that goes out in March will hopefully spur a couple more to come on board that are actually HOAs with, with, with waste hauling contracts. And the others will fall in that other category of HOAs without waste hauling contract. So I really feel good that by April sixteenth, we will have the best list of HOAs that we've ever had.
Well, let's be clear, HOAs, metro districts, two different things. But let's be very clear because we've approved several metro districts and there's more than four, I believe, so we're still using some and they're a form of government. They're not an HOA, so I'd be curious how that relationship works when you're telling another government, you're going to do their trash. Let's just, let's wrap that communication up. I'm really worried that it's not solid. And we're coming to the eleventh hour and I'm not feeling warm and fuzzy with the communication with those organizations.
I will. I think we have seventeen total in the city, so I will reach out to the ones that I haven't talked to and wrap that up for you.
Hey, hey, Jason, we've, we've tracked all that, correct? We've got a map and a list and all that stuff. I, I don't think we've shared that with council yet, have we?
We have not.
Would, would, I, I think it would be helpful if we could share that information with the council, maybe, you know, as a, as a link into the weekly memo to show you, show you what we, what we have done and and perhaps what we may still need to, to continue to do as we proceed.
Yeah, because I'm a little worried that if their boards don't hear about this and that you're talking to somebody, I just, I get nervous. So just, let's make sure you're not talking to the, you know, the one person who forgot to tell the rest of the board to vote on it. Or one way or another, I'd like to make sure I'm secure, you know, I feel secured with the conversation and the communication. The other thing is, is I get confused on the marketing material a little bit because, you know, I see the marketing material we put in the report, like you had up on the screen a minute ago, has no logos of Republic, but yet you have a website that Republic built that kind of replaces our communication and really we're the, we're the organization, even though we contracted the trash service out, we're the actual organization collecting the fees off of that. So I'm confused on the, the clarity around who are, who, who are we talking to? The city or Republic for this? I get Republic's providing customer service, but that's through the lens of going through the city? Are we just going to just advertise for Republic services and just say, well, it's all them? And I'm just confused that the whole branding idea around this is getting me very confused.
Rachel, you want to go or you want me to jump in? Go ahead.
I hear you that the branding can, is an area where we need to be more clear. It is something that we talk about in our core team meetings is how we can make sure that the city doesn't get lost. We have materials from the recycling partnership. We have materials from Republic and then, you know, this is a city program. So it is something that we are, are talking about. What, for, from a strategy perspect, perspective, we're using arvada.org, our website, as a source of the main source where people can find things, but they're going to be directed to other resources. So when we put out materials, we're not promoting Republic's website, but, but if you want to find your service calendar and you go to arvada.org, you'll find a link to the Republic website with service calendars because that's a piece that they kind of own. So I don't think that our brand is staked out as clearly as it can, it needs to be for the future and that is something that we're working on. So I, I hear you and I, I think we need to continue those, that effort.
Yeah, it's just when you look at your communication and education resources, you, you pretty much said Republic did everything, but then when I go in and look at, you know, and there, and it even says Republic Services will answer the, the seven two zero eight nine eight seven five seven five number. But then you go to the website, our website says, well, you're actually calling the city. So I, I get that there might be somebody behind the curtain supporting the program, but we need to be really clear because am I calling Republic or am I calling the city? It might be the same number, but you're saying it, I noticed through this whole presentation, you interchangeably use the city and Republic as one and, and, you know, I, we need to be clear about that because it's the city providing the program. It just happens to be contracted with Republic. And we lose that. I lost that through half this presentation. So if I'm losing that now and it's been almost two years of studying this prod, this program, then I'm sure the residents will have a little concern around that as well.
But those comments are, are spot on and it's something we can take into consideration and it's just, today is the day Republic went live and this shift is from our phone number of seven five seven five is going over to Republic shortly, but people won't know that or understand it if we don't make it clear, so.
Are they, are they answering it as Arvada or are they answering as Republic or, or, I mean, I mean, it's those little things that if you're talking about branding and communication, we need to be consistent and clear.
Agreed. Good comment.
Ford?
Lori, I wanted to ask you, did, do we know the percentage of people who will not respond until they get their first bill? Does, does Republic have any information on that when, you know, these programs are started up?
Well, you know, and see, that's a good question. I'm sorry, Ms. Ford. We have not, we haven't had that discussion, but we can get out there and ask them that.
Because I'm, I'm wondering if there's going to be a lot of calling after that first two months when people suddenly realize there's a program going off that they're not aware of.
It will be a little hard to miss with that cart. We will, we will definitely have work to do on that. We have not talked about what the typical percentage is for that. So something we can talk to them about.
Thanks.
Lori, I've talked to them about that in the past and, and they're, they're really saying that it's difficult to predict because Colorado is so new to this sort of program versus other states. They're predicting that we might have a little more, a higher percentage that don't respond than places that are used to, that have already had this, you know, in communities surrounding them. So it was, I'm sorry, it's just difficult for them to predict.
Thanks, Nancy.
We'll be in the pudding. Okay, Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. Just a quick customer service question. So the question's really twofold. First of all, who gets to decide? And the second is what's going to be their decision? So I picture somebody who didn't respond and then in July, all of a sudden, two big trashcans show up on their driveway one day when they're at work and they come home and they go, hey, wait a minute, this ain't, I, I'm, I'm not doing this. And they call the city and say, you dropped off trashcans, I don't want them. So when, when do they get picked up and do, does that person get billed? Or do they not? You know, in other words, have they generated a bill because they didn't respond in the right time? Or will they be given forgiveness if they just weren't paying attention enough to know about it beforehand?
That, that is very good and we are going to do our decision trees on issues like that. So much like we did various customers and determined how we could make sure we were connecting with them on these responses, we will be doing the same thing. But Jason, go ahead.
So they won't get a bill for one week or, or two of the trash services or trash cans sitting in front of their house. Those would just be picked up. And if they were going to go to the minimum service fee, they could switch to that at that time. But Republic's not going to bill us for a weekly piece of that. Okay, and so will it be Republic who gets to decide that or is that the city who gets to decide that? Republic decides that. We.
We will be collaborating during this implementation, that first one hundred and eighty days when we're seeing these shifts, there will be ongoing discussions. The other part that I want to add is related to any of those shifts in carts as we roll this out, may not happen quite as quickly as, depending on how many of them that there are. So we recognize we're going to have to have some extended opportunity to make these shifts and not be billed because it's not going to be called today and they're picked up tomorrow necessarily. It's not going to be weeks, but it's not an overnight action.
Okay, so let me ask you another customer service question to be kind of along the same lines. Two months in, so in September, somebody gets their bill and there's a charge for trash service on it and two months down the road, they say, wait a minute, nobody ever dropped trashcans at my house. Besides, I already have trash service, but now I've got forty dollars worth of trash service on my water bill. Who, who decides what the customer service action there is and what will be the customer service action? So billing questions would come to the utility billing group for that, and then we would work through what happened and, and what's going on with that. But we would decide, that's the city. And if, and, and Jason, if somebody said, hey, I never got a trashcan, I never put a thing in a trashcan, I still don't have trashcans, but I have a bill, you would say? I would probably double check to make sure, but go ahead, Nancy.
Well, you remember that there is a photograph taken when they, when they dropped the carts with the RFID tags. They actually document that they've, and, and so we have actual documentation that those carts were dropped.
Okay, so, and, and then that, that brings me to my last kind of customer service question. Once this program gets up and going and someone's trashcans disappear, they're responsible for what? To let Republic know that they've gone missing and they will get new ones. So that's the seventy-five, seventy-five extension. And, and they're not charged for the trashcans since they, or, or do they have to pay to replace them? No, they replace for them. Right, okay. Thanks, that's all I have.
I don't see any other questions. Anybody else have anything before I? I've got, yes, Lauren?
Just to follow up actually on the last thing from Councilmember Marriott, correcting if I'm wrong, Nancy, but I seem to recall from one of our earlier workshops that if somebody's trashcans go missing repeatedly, then there could be a charge for replacement of the infrastructure, yes? Depending they're not being stolen and there's a police report, et cetera.
You know, Brian Archer and Jason and I worked a stolen and missing cart fee into our pricing. So we do anticipate that there, there could be three, four percent a year or, or even a little more that go, you know, kids drag them off to the, to the golf course. Yes, that happens. But we really didn't, we've never put in place a, a penalty for if it's a repeat offense. If that, if that is, becomes a case, we'll have to discuss that more.
Okay, well, hopefully that's an unlikely scenario.
I think it's got to be. We'll have a lot of unlikely scenarios we're going to learn through as we, as we work on this.
Yes, excellent question. Thank you.
Okay, well, I just want to sort of wrap this up by thanking the team for, you've obviously put a lot of time and work and energy into this. And I know that you have been receiving a fair number of angry calls from citizens and let me tell you that, you know, that shouldn't be directed at you all. You know, it's, these were policy decisions made by the city council. You all are simply implementing what city council directed you to implement. We, you know, we bear the responsibility for that rather than, than you as team members. So I do want to thank each of you for, for being dedicated to this, to, to trying to make it move as smoothly as possible for our citizens. And, you know, it's, it's a learning curve for all of us and there will be mistakes made along the way and there'll be lessons learned and, and we're going to be in it together. And so I just want to thank each and every one of you for, for what you're doing as part of the team to, to make the direction from council be completed in a way that's consistent with, with what the aspirations are for this program. So thank you. I think that wraps up that aspect. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
No, there's no one.
And then do we have any council reports? Again, if we could maybe go back to the other screen so we can see us all. Anybody have anything? Ms., Ms., I, now I see your pink hand up there, Ms. Miller.
Absolutely. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for continuing to wear their mask. I know that this pandemic, we thought was going to be thirty or sixty or ninety days back almost a year ago. And so appreciate the diligence to allow to keep our businesses open and be back in restaurants. And thank you to everybody that worked on the five star program and I just appreciate your endurance during this awful pandemic. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Devin?
Nothing to report, Mayor and Council?
Rachel, anything, Ms. Morris, that you have?
Nope, nothing for me, Your Honor.
Very good. Well, thank you all. It was a productive workshop and meeting. I can't wait to get back into us all being back together as soon as possible and, and we'll take precautions until we can so that we can get life back to normal just as soon as we can. With that, we are adjourned.